Okay, good evening, everyone. It is six oh seven on Monday, November twenty second. I'd like to call to order an Education Operations Committee meeting of the Wassa School Board. First item on the agenda, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty fifth, two thousand twenty one.
So moved.
Second.
First and the second, any questions, changes? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carries. All right, next on the agenda, we have public and student comments. There are no speakers tonight, okay. All right, we will move on then to Mr. Chass's presentation.
Financial projection model assumptions.
Thank you. Cass is going to call up on the screen so everybody can blow it up a little bit. Okay, you can reference in your packet this document. And on that first page, I give a little bit of narrative talking about what the budget model assumption is. It's a five-year projection tool that we use. And to build that five-year projection tool, we need to make dozens and dozens and dozens of assumptions. Most of them don't get a lot of attention. And the assumptions are just a starting place, is where we begin to build our budget. We assume this is going to happen. And then, of course, we always have to make adjustments from those assumptions. But if you don't have assumptions to begin with, you really have nowhere to start. So on that first page, one of the assumptions that gets a lot of attention oftentimes on top, next year's salary increases for teachers and custodians and administrators and all the different employment categories, two point three percent. Okay, two point three percent is just the assumption. It's our best guess for what would happen if we just take that teacher's schedule and we keep on doing what we said we were going to do a couple of years ago, two point three percent. We know that the Consumer Price Index is about four percent right now. It's probably going to be higher than four percent. But you're also going to see an assumption later on, and I might as well deal with that one right away. Our state biennial budget, the second year of which will be next year, offers zero additional new money in per pupil revenue limit increase and zero new money in terms of per pupil categorical aid. So our two biggest areas that get increased through the state budget every year or every two years are zero. And again, those are assumptions. But in that case, we don't think those are going to change because it's the second year of biennial. So we take the teacher number, two point three percent. We just replicate that same percent for all employment groups. And again, it's an assumption. And it's nothing more than an assumption. They will certainly get adjusted throughout the year. Below that are cost savings that we capture from turnover in the teacher ranks. We're making an assumption that twenty teachers are going to retire. Those twenty teachers will retire at step one twenty-five or seventy-three thousand dollars in salary, ignoring the benefits. They will be replaced by teachers at step one oh six and a half. And those were generated from historical data or fifty thousand seven hundred. So if teachers, twenty of them, retire at seventy-three thousand and are replaced at fifty thousand seven hundred, that's an incredible cost that is incurred by the district, losing that kind of talent. You lose the talent of twenty teachers that have been working that long to earn a salary of seventy-three thousand, and they leave the district and they come with a replacement of a perhaps young teacher, not quite a rookie teacher, but a young teacher for fifty thousand seven hundred. That's a big loss to the district. But fortunately, we also are able to shed some costs by replacing an experienced teacher with someone that's less experienced. And if we do all the calculations for not only the twenty teachers that retire, but forty teachers that leave through attrition, cost savings of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Question?
Bob, one question on the two point three percent. And without getting into the nitty-gritty of the detail, does that include, is there any assumption within that assumption of new money being added to the schedules out there today? Or is it just to meet minimum commitments from the old and the new and the whole discussion that we just had a few years ago?
Every year over the last how many years, new money has been added? Every single year, new money has been added. The two point three is all new money, so to speak. If we take a cast-forward costing model, we take a snapshot of all of our employees and we lock it in in January, which is required by the W E R C, and we take those same teachers, current year versus next year, as an aggregate, it goes up two point three percent. So there's an argument, all of that is new money. Just like last year, two point one five percent was all new money. I know we hear the word freeze a lot, nobody was frozen, okay? The average last year was about two point two percent. The average teacher went up two point two percent. I would suspect the average teacher here would go up about two point three five percent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Could I just clarify, though? Are you wondering, would we be changing anything on the pay scale itself? Any dollar amounts?
Right.
Okay.
Along with?
So, because we want to be upfront about this. If you recall, in the transition years, next year, is it the second or third year, Bob, of the transition? Second? So this would be the, is this the last? We had proposed, the board had approved the plan, that this next year would be the last year. We would not change the dollar amounts at the different salary levels because we want to hold that target, that people who are transitioning want to hold that steady. So people will move to the tune of about two point three percent, but we weren't planning on adding any, any changing either of the two models. Is that clear?
Yes. And my only comment to that, and we're not going to discuss it now, is that, given everything that's happened in the last twelve to twenty-four months, we may want to revisit that assumption because honestly, I think that our biggest challenge is going to be centered around staffing in all positions in the next five years. Rather than wait and perhaps get behind relative to others, I think we should at least entertain what that may look like.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Agree with everything that's been said. For the assumptions, we'll start at two point three. And just to be clear, that makes the assumption that teachers all move on the schedule as they had expected. Teachers going from the old to the new, transition with perhaps a plus one, plus two, or plus three. Those are pretty expensive in some cases. Or teachers staying on the old schedule, get what they were expecting on the old schedule, which sometimes is a large dollar amount, too. Teachers stayed on the old schedule for a reason usually. So this is that assumption, okay? And then into January and February and beyond, we'll talk a lot about changing these assumptions. Now unfortunately, when we build the fiscal projection with these assumptions, especially when you put in zero new revenue on the revenue limit, zero new revenue on per pupil categorical aid, we're probably going to have a pretty large cut number. It wouldn't surprise me to have a two million dollar reduction number. So to do things like that, we're going to have to find some creative sources of revenue or else of other reductions.
Right. And my only concern is that we go into it with that approach every year. If we don't start with an assumption that this is what we want to do, we will never allot anything for it to even have the discussion. So that's.
Correct. So moving on with the assumptions, the FICA is seven point six five, like it's been historically for a long, long time. The W R S is actually seven point six five, where it was seven, six point, six point five, where it was six point seven five. So W R S, both the employee and the employer contribution has gone down a quarter percent. That will offer some relief in the budget. Life insurance disability going up marginally. Here's an important one, health and dental insurance. We're going to make a projection, right? That's what the assumption is, zero percent increase on health, zero percent increase on dental. Our insurance committee just met last week and we talked about, we may have to make small plan design changes to achieve that zero, but we would love not to. So it's an assumption right now, zero percent increase, the district portion and the employee portion on health and dental. That's very encouraging. The next page, there are a lot of zeros on top with general fund assumptions and utility assumptions. That just tells us that the things that we can hold at zero and hold stable, we do hold stable. People's budgets aren't going up. The sites are not getting increases in budgets. The departments are not getting increases in budgets. Most of our increases are through personnel and some things that we don't have a lot of control over, like the line for transportation. Transportation, we do have a few years left, two point five, two point five, two point five. Those were actually renegotiated about a year and a half ago when we gave some concessions to First Student regarding pandemic days, calamity days, they're called. But after that, five-year contract is done, we're back to probably five percent, five percent. By then, we'll be another biennial budget and a half down the road and hopefully better days ahead from the state of Wisconsin. Vehicle fuel, pretty high right now. We're keeping that at zero for next year and then two percent's beyond that. Our insurance is up three percent, three percent, three percent, with the exception of unemployment insurance. We don't expect that to go up any, zero. The next several lines are representative of the things that we can hold stable. We do hold stable, with the exception of in Fund Fifty, our food service fund, food costs are going up. So we've got an increase penciled in for that one. On the bottom, where it says manual adjustments, open enrollment tuition. We do know that our open enrollment trend, the outs versus ins are, the gap is widening little by little. And we're expecting that gap to widen by two percent each of the next five years. That's pretty subtle, but it does suggest that open enrollment trends are getting worse, so to speak. More outs versus ins. The next one, the Wisconsin Parental Choice Voucher Program, historically has been going up about twenty percent every year. That does not impact our budget as much as it impacts our tax levy. Our tax levy goes up and then we transit the money to Madison. Historically, it's been going up about twenty percent each of the last three or four years. We're anticipating that continuing. Property value, that's not a budgetary item, but it is a mill rate item. Our property values went down one point one four percent this year, while the rest of the state went up about three or four. That's probably a reaction to two years ago, it went up nine percent. So that was probably a market correction more than anything. But we're making the assumption that property values will continue to go up two percent, two percent, two percent. Exempt computers unchanged, per pupil revenue limit and the per pupil categorical aid, I mentioned that earlier. We know next year, by state biennial budget decree, those are both zero. Beyond that, we're expecting revenue limits to increase two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars per pupil each of the next four years. Investment income down a little bit because of the investment climate we're in the midst of. Energy efficiency debt, we're held to those debt payments from borrowing from our energy efficiency projects from several years ago. Our Fund Eighty levy, I've got stable for the next five years. Here's a bright spot, the Adeble Special Ed costs goes from twenty-eight point two to thirty percent in the first year of the biennial budget. When people out of Madison talk about brand-new money being brought to schools, that's the one they're talking about. And it's a pretty small dollar amount, but it's from twenty-eight percent up to thirty percent. Those are the assumptions. There's no action necessary. You'll probably see these assumptions reiterated when I present the projection model itself. And then we'll have to get serious about how we balance our next year's budget. Any further questions?
Bob, just one clarification on the, I think it's like on natural gas and fuel and all that stuff. We have the zeros in there right now, and I think that has to do with kind of pre-buying or prepaying for some of that stuff, given the inflation that we're in. Can you just explain quickly for everyone why that's zero versus, you know, kind of what's reflective of the market today?
Sure, it's a combination of things. We do prepay energy contracts for natural gas for, I believe, five of our buildings, not all of our buildings, but the high-volume buildings. So we can lock in a budget and we kind of predict what that budget's going to be. So with confidence, even in an increasing market like we're in right now, we can lock that in at zero. It is also perhaps one of the areas that's been over-budgeted the last few years. And I think a lot of that has to do with some of the energy efficiency measures we've been making over the last five or ten years. Relative to ten years ago, natural gas is still pretty low. You're right, it is going up this year. But some of the hedging of our bets by contract pricing has helped us keep that at zero.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chass, I was hoping that for a future meeting, maybe the next meeting, is this going to be the next meeting?
No, I, it's, I don't think it's on the agenda yet for the next.
The actual projection tool? We'll start building it. We haven't built it.
Yeah.
We still need to build it. These are the assumptions that we feed into the projection tool.
Oh, okay.
So we still have a lot of work to do to get these assumptions built into the projection tool. And I think historically, it shows up around January.
It shows up again in January?
Excuse me?
This will show up again in January?
I'll remind you of the assumptions and then the model itself, what it reveals. We plug these assumptions in, several other not-so-exciting assumptions, and then we'll see a number in January such as, we need to make room for two million dollars of reductions or.
Okay. Yeah, because the one thing that I'm seeing in these charts here is, you know, I'm seeing that there's teachers, teachers, non-salaried schedule, teachers, administrators, clerical, custodial, municipal, food service. But then we see the teacher's pay being broken down by year. I would love to see everyone else's pay broken down by year as well and to see how that would increase over the years. So, so like for example, page one right now, we're just seeing that teachers are being broken down in this chart. I would love to see administrators, clerical, custodial, municipal, and food service being broken down in this chart as well so that we can see all the numbers against each other. Because the one thing that I'm concerned with is I see that for year twenty-two, twenty-three, the two point three zero percent increase, that's across the board. But, you know, for those who are getting paid more, that two point three percent translates to a larger increase. So maybe if there's a group in here that's getting paid a lot more compared to other groups, maybe the board can make a decision that that group wouldn't get a raise because then it would be across the board more equitable.
Absolutely.
You were right, not get a raise or smaller raise because then it would be more equitable across the board. So in January, I would love to see it broken down across all of those groups there, if that could be done in January.
Sure, we can run a report, and we run a budget report each year where it is broken down. And our budget book does have it broken down. The reason this second spot appears on the assumptions, what happens with teacher salaries, where a starting teacher earns forty-three thousand and a top teacher earns eighty thousand, doesn't happen in all of our employment categories. So it's more important to the projection model to understand the amount of turnover and the amount of net savings from that turnover. We could have turnover in the custodial ranks, and it doesn't influence our projection model that much. We can have turnover in the administrative ranks, and it doesn't influence our model as much. These are called out because these significantly influence the model. But you're right, once the projection model is built, and certainly when the budget is built, you can look back in our budget book right now, and they're all broken down, how much money we do spend on administrators, how much we spend on clerical, custodial, and so forth. And we'll put that in the January report, and we'll certainly continue to put it in our budget book in there right now.
Yeah, very similar.
Anything else, Ms. Law?
No, that's.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
As always. Okay, next item, which is an action item tonight, is new course requests for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Mr. Winter?
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Winter. I'm the Career and Technical Education Coordinator, and I brought Mr. Theron Peterson with me. Theron is our Technology Education and Engineering Teacher at Wassa West, as well as our Department Leader. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about FabLab One and FabLab Two class. This is going to be kind of a replacement of one of our classes, one of our existing classes that are on the books now, that Theron actually teaches. FabLab One and FabLab Two would replace Intro to Engineering, which is one of our Project Lead the Way classes. But we are going to retain the Project Lead the Way curriculum. We're just changing a little bit of the structure of the way that we offer these to our students. So if you could turn to the next slide. So what is a FabLab? If you're not familiar with a FabLab, it's basically a classroom with a lot of fancy equipment that allows students to design and build and really work with their hands. It's a lot of hands-on projects. Some of the equipment there, as you see in the top picture, is a laser engraver. The bottom left is a CNC router. It's actually a new piece that we purchased recently, and it's a tabletop. So it's much smaller than what students are typically using in some of our labs. It'll fit nicely in Mr. Peterson's classroom. And then some of the new 3D printers, that's kind of what we're after as far as some of the equipment that students would be using, some vinyl cutters, some of the software's 3D design, and then just general supplies where students are really, you know, making different things, designing and making things. So that's what a FabLab is. We've always, I should mention too, we've always kind of considered ourselves as a FabLab. We just really haven't used the name. A lot of the things that Theron is doing with reverse engineering and things like that are very similar to what other FabLabs are doing. We've gone and visited some of them. We've been to the Three Lakes FabLab. We've been to Merrill's, Merrill has another FabLab. So we've been up there and talked to those teachers, and it's been a good collaboration that way. So we really kind of know what we're getting into and what's been working for other schools and what isn't. So we're kind of excited about it. So this is kind of the structure here. So the existing course is a Project Lead the Way, as I mentioned, IED, Intro to Engineering. Currently, it's a year-long class. It's going to, it has college credit, so the transcripted credit is there, and it's the first level that students take when they go into engineering. The emphasis is on solid modeling, design process, and reverse engineering. So the new course that we're proposing to replace that is the FabLab One and Two, which is a semester-long class. And that's really the why behind all of this is sometimes students aren't comfortable enough to commit to a year-long engineering class. So what we'd really like to do is be able to offer these new courses as kind of an exploratory, hands-on. They're going to get a flavor of the whole buffet. And they're going to, you know, one of the things Mr. Peterson's also mentioned is, you know, engineers or aspiring engineers don't always go down and work with the welding machines or the machine tool, or maybe it's the construction. And so we're trying to give kids more of an exploratory experience so that they can make a better decision in the future, and it's more flexible for them. You know, they could take it their freshman year, they could take it their senior year. They could take FabLab One their sophomore year and come back and take it their senior year. Or maybe they're a senior that has an open schedule, and they've never really tried a STEM class or a tech ed class. Then they're going to have the option to be able to do this in a semester. If they like it, then they can take a FabLab Two and then pursue other courses that we offer in that department. So as I mentioned, semester class, it modifies the existing, but we're really trying to keep the Project Lead the Way piece involved in it. And it includes graphic design, automation, manufacturing, and then blending all of those cross-curricular subjects into this one semester class, so. It also is incorporating Industry Four Point O, which is something, if you turn to the next slide, Cassie thinks. So this is a little glimpse into the future of tech ed and where we're headed. We've gotten a lot of feedback from our business partners, and we've heard a lot of momentum around Industry Four Point O, but not a lot of people understand what it is. And, you know, I've had some people make comments, what happened to three point five? And so really what this is getting after is automation and starting to bring some automated processes into our curriculum. You know, like an example is welding. So a lot of hands-on welding, well, a lot of our local businesses are converting to robotic welding. And so, you know, some of the skill sets that students need is not only understanding the automated processes, but also the maintenance side of things and how to maintain a lot of the automation. So, long story short, you may hear from us in a year with another proposal or new curriculum that we would like to start going more into this direction of automation. Mechatronics is another term that's being used, robotics and smart machine, smart machines. So that's kind of the glimpse into the future a little bit. But for now, we're bringing on FabLab One and FabLab Two with your blessing. So if you have any questions, Mr. Peterson's here as well. Do you have any questions for us?
Okay.
I have one question.
You have one?
Well, first of all, I love this. I think this is great as a parent who's had two kids go through the Intro to Engineering course. I really appreciate it, and the semester option, I think, is going to be so much more manageable for students. My question is, I see that it's going to retain the PLTW branding. Will it still offer the college credit like Intro to Engineering did? Or not because of the change with it being a semester long?
Sure, so for those that don't know, Project Lead the Way, that's a national curriculum, started in New York twenty years ago, we'll say. We signed on about fifteen, sixteen years ago as a certified school. And so since that time, we have this Introduction to Engineering Design. We have five other classes that we do offer. And one of the nice things about it, like Karen said, is we do offer college credit opportunities for those that pass a test at the end of the year. So this is something that Project Lead the Way would write, we would just simply administer. And kind of embedded in that is that we, as teachers, are teaching to their curriculum. And so we go to training prior to teaching any of these classes to hear what they have us, or what they want us to teach, and then kind of the expectation is that we are following that curriculum. To your question, we will be offering all of the content within the two semester courses. I think, you know, kind of to what John was saying, we're looking to try and embed some more of this automation, some more of this Industry Four Point O, as it's called, to try and get these students more accustomed to what they're going to be seeing in their future. So yes, the college credit opportunity will still exist, yeah.
Because the test and the content will still be cut.
Correct.
Offered.
Yep.
Okay, great.
I think I was going to follow up on the same idea. This is going to continue the transcript of credit, you answered the question there. I'm happy to see that we're expanding into the robotics and all the other items that go along with Project Lead the Way. And that was probably going to be another question I would have asked of you. But keep up the good work because a little bit further north, they've been a little ahead of us. So we need to catch up and pass them.
Thank you.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the college credit that's offered? Like, who is it through? Does it transfer to any of the UW schools here?
Sure, so the way that I often like to explain this to parents, to students, is you think about kind of the AP, right? That's kind of the way that we think about college credit, certainly at West, is that as an AP student, I'm paying to take that test. So I pay some money, I sit down to take that test at the end of the year. The difference with this is that Project Lead the Way students are taking this as their final exam. In the event that they pass it with a qualifying score, then they get the opportunity to purchase the credit. So this has really no requirements on behalf of the high school class. This is not something that I require of the students. This is merely an opportunity that is presented through Project Lead the Way. This is not even a Wassa School District thing. Being a certified school, we then can offer this as an opportunity. So to your second question, this is something that is articulated through several schools throughout the nation. Rochester Institute of Technology in New York, they're kind of the mothership that has taken on Project Lead the Way. But here in Wisconsin, the affiliate university is Milwaukee School of Engineering. And so that's where we've all gone to our training. And taking those, or I guess purchasing those credits, you can purchase through Milwaukee School of Engineering, and it is as though you've taken the class at Milwaukee School of Engineering. And so you have those credits, you can then pursue transferability to any school that you go to. I know that in many cases, different schools, state schools in particular, will take them in as elective credits, but every program, every school is different. And so I always recommend to the students, to the parents, make sure that you take this to wherever you're planning on going and just ask them, what is your transfer policy for these credits? for these credits?"
Okay. Yeah, because the only reason why I ask is because now UW's point, the Wassa campus here, the two-year school, they now have a new engineering program. So I was just wondering if these college credits would transfer to, you know, a program like that? I mean, the engineering program is brand-new at, you know, the UW point campus here, just across the street, and, you know, that was very exciting for the county. So, you know, that was the only thing that I was just wondering, you know, like, would this college credit, would it transfer to the two-year school here? Because then if they do the class here, they pass the class, they take the test, they pass it, and then they have that credit, it would transfer, you know, right over across the street.
So, two things. Locally with NTC, we've had a lot of discussions through the years with them as far as transcripted, Project Lead the Way transcripted credit. And they're wonderful to work with in terms of offering credit for prior learning. And what happens is a student sits down with an academic advisor out at NTC, and they review it, and then they make the decision whether or not they'll grant credit to that student, and most times they will, especially if they're Project Lead the Way. To the point about UWSP, so the transcripted credit at times is facilitated through Project Lead the Way themselves, and they will enter into conversations with university systems. And sometimes that decision is made kind of above us with Project Lead the Way corporate and the university system. So that would be nice, and I think that'll be some feedback that we take to our Project Lead the Way room.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great. Because the one thing I didn't mention also was UWSP, their partnership with UW Platteville, which Platteville is like the engineering school in Wisconsin, you know? So, you know, that's just, you know, just works like that, so I was just.
You're exactly right. Platteville and UWSP are the partners. So with Project Lead the Way at Platteville, there are nine different Project Lead the Way courses that they will evaluate for credit. Some are taken as electives. And then also through Platteville, if a student has completed at least three Project Lead the Way courses, that actually equates to a specific engineering course at Platteville. So I would assume since UWSP is partnered with Platteville, it would be a very comparable transfer.
Okay.
You know, just a, I guess, maybe a comment or a question. When we start talking about referendums and, you know, what we should be doing and where we're going as a district, this topic alone, in my opinion, should have as much, if not more, airtime than anything else that we want to do within the district for lots of reasons. I mean, when you look at industry trends, and I think, you know, we've talked about it, and we've nibbled around the edges of it, but we've never really taken the big step and say, "You know what? We're going to become a leader in trade education," right? I mean, I normally have things like building trades, I think is the, one of the generic ones right there. Frankly, I have a child who's going through it right now, someone who doesn't or hasn't had that experience in a long time, the excitement that is generated, you know, learning plumbing, learning electrical, learning framing and things like that. I mean, to me, those are perfect launchpads to have semester-long courses, right? In the tech ed area, and really set kids up, whether it's transitioning to a UWSP or whether it's beginning an apprenticeship program, you know, through the tech or whomever. I happen to have a child now who thinks he's qualified to wire the garage we just built because he had two weeks in high school.
Not yet, not yet.
So, I agree, and I'm trying to hold him off, and he's like, "I can do it. Trust me, I can do it." We're still negotiating his overall involvement with that. But honestly, I mean, the excitement from the kids and the stories that I hear, it's overwhelming. Like, it's like they look forward to these classes, and they're, the kids that are interested in government, they're interested in business, and, you know, that's kind of their focus. But given the opportunity, it's like this whole new world opened up to them. And I would love to see us, you know, again, a referendum, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but to really just blow out what our offerings are across this whole tech ed spectrum. You know, that, to me, could be as big, if not a bigger draw, of kids coming to a district than anything else we're doing.
I agree, and I think that it's important, there's another important aspect to that is we really want to keep people in our community, and the opportunities are here, and this is, these are the kind of programs that are really inviting kids to stay.
Well, I think this is gonna kind of dovetail really well with things that are going on in the community. I know that we were just at another meeting where they were talking about some work being done by the Chamber, where they're purchasing a building downtown as kind of a high-tech hub. And so, you know, we're really having conversations about what is our role in the whole continuum of robotics education, of, you know, employee training. And so I think, you know, Pat, like you said, just generating some excitement, generating some exposure to some of these things is really gonna, you know, hopefully that's where we see ourselves being.
Right. I know that there are so many local companies that can't get apprentices, you know, to even enter into those programs, whether it was through the tech or anyone else. And I just think that if you offer that, and if we made it more available to kids in high school, starting that excitement and kind of lighting that spark, I would be amazed if it didn't take off, especially when you look at the climate around here. I mean, all the manufacturing that we have, you know, and want to continue to propagate, it's, to me, it's, we're missing the mark on, and I think what we really could be potential-wise.
On that note, John, you mentioned business partners, or you guys, as part of these courses, to go out and see area businesses that are heavily involved in, you know, robotics, automation, manufacturing processes?
Because he's in the audience, we're gonna highlight Paul Harrowback here, he's with Great Lakes Cheese. We just, a couple of teachers just went out there, but yeah, we are working on setting up a tour with him. Very automated facility, and we're working to try and get our robotics students to get out there and see specifically what they're doing, and how kind of taking a manufacturing process and automating it sets it really to that next level.
Yeah, I just, you know, I draw a correlation with a lot of kids that like working in Minecraft and in the industry that I'm in, and BIM, Revit content, I don't know if that's part of your courses, but if it's not, it's something we should probably look into. BIM and Revit is a tool for the construction trades and commercial contracting and engineering. That, it's kind of funny how you take kids that are playing in Minecraft and building these things, and then show them BIM and Revit, you know, design tools where you can literally walk through a building in a 3D automation. It's kind of neat how they can take that and go, "I can do something that I really enjoyed doing, you know, at home, and apply that to a career to make, you know, a very nice salary." So I'm excited to see this stuff, obviously, in my back row.
Thanks for bringing this forward. This is what school boards want to hear. We want to get back to the academics of everything. And what we're doing for our students, so thank you very much.
I could offer.
Anytime. I just, I may ask you to come do a final inspection if Kyle doesn't. I'm a little hesitant.
That might be wise. I just want to offer one correction. I want to love this conversation. We, the three of us, and Dr. Rousher and others, have, we have a lot of conversations with local employers, and the only correction I want to make is we are a leader already, but certainly we are always looking to do more. But from the employer, and that's not just, you know, us blowing our own horn, but our employers in their area would say the same, so, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so this was an action, or is an action item. So after that discussion, I am seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the new FabLab 1 and FabLab 2 courses for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
You have multiple firsts and a second, so it sounds like we have.
Pick somebody.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next, item number six, we have Dr. Rousher with student fee requests for 2022-2023 school year. This is also an action item.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for supporting the FabLab 1 and FabLab 2 improvements. If I could just take a moment and just really thank John and Theron and all of our tech ed teachers across the district. These things come to you because they are constantly thinking about, "What can we do next? How can we go further? How can we better serve students?" So thank you for supporting them in that work, and thank you guys for doing the work. As far as student fees go, this is also another spot where each year we take a careful look and try to figure out, is what we're doing correct? Does it still make sense? Is there anything we could do differently or better? And the angle here is not just for students, but for our families across the district. So when I say "we" take a look at these, it's a variety of people. Principals are involved, teacher leaders are involved, Bob Tess and his team are involved. And just know that when you see the fees come each year, for the most part, they are related to what we would call consumable items. So something that students use while they're in a class and then consume or use up. So you think about a foods class, in order to do that well, or a culinary class, we have to purchase food every time students do a lab. If you're welding, we have to purchase the metal, we have to purchase the gas, and so on. So think about that as you look at these. We look at them really carefully each year. I don't know if we'll ever get to the spot to eliminate all fees because we have these consumables, but we do try to look at what could we do better? So I'm just gonna highlight a few changes from this year. Actually, three years ago, we, with COVID, we suspended all fees to see if that would be a good way to serve the community. And then last year, one of the things we did at the high school level was take off the school activity fee or the overall school fee that had been $30 for a long time. We are continuing to keep that off families' lists of fees this year. And that'll be something we'll have to evaluate going forward, but right now, the principals feel like they can keep doing that at the high school. And then at the middle school level, we'd had that fee at $22. As a first step, we're lowering it to $20 for next year. So just a couple examples of what we're looking at there. Another piece, if you take a look, and actually, I guess you cannot see this on the fee because we really did eliminate it. Sometimes we just leave a blank, so you can see where something has come off. But a few years ago, again, thanks to John Winter and some of our community supporters, we were able to eliminate tech ed fees at the high school level. So we said, "Well, is there a possibility that maybe we could eliminate some fees at the middle school level as well?" And we were able to take off specific class fees for some of our career and technical education courses there, like our family and consumer education classes, our tech apps classes, I believe there's a manufacturing class. So overall, there were kind of three categories of classes at the middle school level that are open to sixth, seventh, or eighth graders, and we've removed fees from those. The other good news is no fees are going up. So fees are either staying static or going down. So I would just ask that you support those, this fee list that you have for next year, please.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Rousher? I just have one, and this is probably a Bob question. What do we, what is the revenue? You roll all these fees together annually, what does that come up to?
I want to say a number on that one.
Fair enough.
Fifty to 100,000.
Okay.
Some of it stays at the sites, so I don't see it, because they collect money for an expendable that they spend money at the sites. Some of it comes back to central office. It's not as easy to track as you might think, but every expense is supposed to be to cover something that was actually purchased.
Right, and I should clarify, I'm not suggesting that it's not, I'm just trying to give people context on what these all kind of build up towards. And the other thing to point out is that I know that we, a student is never denied an opportunity in a course because of any fee, potential fee barrier or anything like that, so.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Nope.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the proposed 2022-2023 student fees as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have item seven, our 4K program agreements. This one is also an action item.
Good evening. Good to see you all. I am here with Kira Rakowski, as you know, our 4K principal and early childhood coordinator, and we are looking for approval on our four-year-old program agreements with our collaborative sites. Just a little bit of history, the Wassa School District has entered into these program agreements with our community collaboration sites since 2002. And in the past five years, the Wassa School District has had agreements with the following sites, the Wassa Childcare East and West, Mountain View Montessori, the YMCA, and Newman Catholic Schools. I believe you were all, you all are privy to the actual program agreement and what that looks like, and these would be agreements for the 22-23 school year, and we're just seeking approval to enter into those agreements once again. And if you have any questions, we'll do our best to answer them for you.
Okay, any questions? Michelle? Okay, hearing none. I will seek a motion to approve the four-year kindergarten program agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies. All right, item eight, school safety drill update, also an action item.
Hello, I'm Henry Kremnitzer, I'm the student safety specialist for the school district. What has been submitted to you is the school, the safety drills that each school has done throughout the district. There's two. The first one is informational, the second one is active, which will be in February or March. This one has to be submitted to the Office of School Safety. I don't know if you guys have any questions. I can answer anything you have.
This is a requirement, we're required by statute to approve these each year, is that right?
Correct.
You probably asked the same thing last year.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am then seeking a motion to recommend to the full board the approval of the school's safety drill evaluations as presented.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, and our last item on the agenda this evening, policy 144.2, board member ethics. Ms. Rouge asked that this be placed on the agenda for some discussion slash clarification, so I will turn it over to her to kick off this topic.
Okay, under the, the, item H, under what is it, the third fold heading, school board members should maintain desirable relationships with the rest, with district administrator and staff. Item H says, knowing the only form of volunteering that a board can perform is providing infrequent assistance at school events and programs. And it goes on. I would like to just eliminate that altogether. I think it's unequally enforced, and I don't see a problem with us volunteering in the schools. I know there is some concern that staff get nervous when there's a board member in the building, but that is something that we definitely need to work on. There should not be any stress when a board member comes into a building, and we need to work on that relationship if that is in fact true.
Okay, so I guess before we get into the merits, well, let's start there. I know that when this came up a few years ago, it actually went to the attorneys, or to an attorney.
Yeah, that's where that language, it's like, it's literally a quote from the memo we got from the council.
And their recommendation was that that be part of the policy?
Right.
Okay. And so, Ms. Rouge, you mentioned that it's unequally enforced.
Yes.
Who enforces this?
Exactly.
Well, I think it's like any other board ethics provision, it's just a directive to us. And so, you know, so for example, last spring, I, as a softball parent, took my turn running the concession stand. That's a form of an infrequent assistance at an event. That would be allowed. However, I wouldn't be allowed to be a coach on the softball team there every single day, creating this thought of bias. creating this thought of bias of, you know, oh, the softball team has a board member and the baseball team doesn't, or whatever. So, I think it's like any other ethical provision in here, it just gives direction to board members of what the board as a whole, and in this case, based on legal counsel, has said, we can and can't do.
Because, I mean, the example that you had given, Jane, I think when you brought this up about the curling, I think it's an annual event.
Yes, when this was discussed, I was running the kitchen for the yearly bonds deal, for the high school bonds deal, and I was told that was too much involvement, I shouldn't be front and center. So, it shouldn't be, a board member shouldn't be in charge of a fundraising event, or shouldn't be running the kitchen. They can work in the kitchen, but they couldn't run the kitchen, and...
So, did that come from someone within the school?
That, we discussed that at the board meeting, because at the time, a board member was also running after-school tennis program for grade school kids. And she was told she had to stop, and then my involvement with the bonds deal came up, and it was like, well, that's a little too involved. So, I was...
It's a once-a-year thing, right?
Yes.
Well, and again, it's kind of, this is a self-enforced, I guess, for lack of a better term, kind of a provision. I don't know what others think, but I certainly wouldn't have an issue with someone volunteering to run a kitchen once a year for a curling...
Of course not.
...event like that.
I don't either, but it's like, well, then it wasn't good, now it's good, it just fluctuates so much. And yeah, there was legal advice, but the advice doesn't make any sense. Why is it harmful for somebody to come, say, go in, volunteer in a library to put books on a shelf? We are, or to coach, I mean, not coach, but to referee a game? We're short in a lot of things, and to take a volunteer and say, no, we don't want you. And I can see it being, if you're gonna take a front and center role, like being a coach, that's, that might be a little bit too far, but if you're just in the background...
Right, and I think the, maybe one of the keys here is to, I mean, the wording of the first sentence, can perform is providing infrequent assistance at school events or programs. And to me, you know, how you choose to personally define infrequent, I guess, is up to you, but I guess annually, doing an event, doing an event annually, I, to me, that passes the smell test of being infrequent.
Yeah, and I think that when we received the memo from council, it did discuss what you mentioned, Jane, about the dynamics change in a school building, wanting school members in there. So, I think where it happens is important. So, volunteering, I gave my example of, I don't think I made anybody uncomfortable, in all burgers at the concession stand is different than being in a building while they're actually teaching kids and working. But the other thing that the memo mentioned is it also talked about, even if you're not making, let's say you're volunteering with a friend, or I'd say I'm volunteering with my wife, or I don't know, something, you like, where your wife probably would make her uncomfortable, so use a better example, you're volunteering with a friend, your friend is totally happy to have you in their room every day. That memo also talked about what perception that gives to the rest of the district. Oh, so-and-so has a board member in her classroom, and this school does not, it's kind of like how we talk about our board liaison positions, we always have to remind schools that we're not, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean we're advocates for that school, we represent all, the whole district as a whole. So, that was the other issue, it wasn't just making people uncomfortable, also was creating the wrong image to the rest of the school buildings. Why is there a board member at this school, but this school doesn't have a board member in there every day? But I, I mean, that example that you just gave of running the kitchen for a fundraising event, I don't see how that would violate this.
So, do we have to have action on something like this? Because, you know... I talked about it as well, reffing basketball games, and, you know, is that, you know, where are we at? What do we have to do with...
No, this isn't listed for action, Jane had a, I think your recommendation was to eliminate section H from that, from that whole section, paragraph H from that section. And we just, we have the history that it was recommended by the attorneys, they did try to identify this, or tried to identify examples of what infrequent is in that example too, like reffing, because they don't have a ref, and it's an intramural or a scrimmage game, I, I don't know who the jury is on that, but to me, that is, falls within that as well, so I...
Although, if that were paid, that would be different.
Right, and I think that the memo talked about that too. There's also, so it goes in levels, and you can't write, it's like with writing laws, writing policies, you can't always hit everything perfectly, but it talked about degrees, getting paid cranks it up an additional level, you know, if you're paid by the district, then you shouldn't be on the school board.
Yeah, that's a whole nother...
Right.
...thing.
And I, I mean, I think aside from this example, I think everyone has done, as far as I'm aware of, everyone's done a good job of assessing those situations themselves. I've not heard of someone or a board member being infrequent, visited any place, or being a frequent invoker.
No, not here, no. And frankly, I understand people, everybody on this board wants to be a help, and they know people are short-staffed, and they love kids and teachers and staff, and so they want to help. I would just offer two examples, not from this district, previous district, where board members were frequently involved, and we had two incidents. One really was accusations of favoritism that Lance mentioned earlier, another where we actually had a harassment claim filed against a board member because of their level of involvement, and there's all sorts of intricacies there, but it does lead to potential for, at the very least, discomfort, and at worst, you know, an unhealthy climate, if I would say.
That really disturbs me, that we would create an unhealthy climate or such a distraction to be in a building, that puts such a barrier between us and the rest of the staff. It seems like there's force field, and we're only to deal with administrators, and it just, I think it's hiked up to be more than it should be.
I wish I could agree, because I feel the same way as the superintendent, right? You know, when I walk into a building, it's just a different feel, people feel differently about it. And I wish it weren't the case, you know, but, and I, you know, I am part of the staff, so I, there really is no real barrier, but there certainly is the feel of one, so I understand what you're saying, but, you know, reality is what it is.
And I think maybe we as a board need to discuss too, what about when somebody crosses the line so, like your second example, when you've got somebody that is harassing, I mean, I've heard of board members saying, I want my kid in this class, and I want my kid in... There should be a way for whoever is being demanded of to come, so that we can't fire anybody on the board, but we can, you know, kind of steer them in the right direction.
Well, I mean, the board can censure other board members, which basically is like saying, you know, naughty, that's it, you can't kick board members off, the board's take care of that, so that's about all you can really do. I think, I think the provision is okay, and rather, I just think you should just do that fundraiser if you want, Keith, I think, and it's fine.
And if there were complaints, Keith, I would expect that they would come up through you, and open buildings would say, hey, you know, Jim's here every week, and he's really freaking us out.
Well, that's the hard part, right? Well, isn't that, isn't that part of the problem? That, you're describing why this is a complicated issue, because now you're asking staff to go to their boss to tell their boss that their boss's bosses are doing something wrong.
Yeah.
And asking Keith to come and correct and discipline the people who...
My boss.
You're the only person we hire and evaluate, so that's, that's one of the issues with this.
It really relies on us to make the right judgments.
Right, we have to do it ourselves.
Again, I would echo what Lance, I would just do it.
Even helpful when my kids were involved, but...
Okay. All right, anything else on that one? All right, there was no action requested for that one, so with that, I believe I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a good evening, everyone, and a great Thanksgiving.